Good afternoon, good morning, good evening, depending on the time that you're watching this. Hello, everybody. Thank you for joining us today. We're here to talk with city council candidate Drew Keaton L. We're going to discuss various aspects of improving Springfield to make it an attractive place for families, promote affordable housing, encourage business partnerships, create safer communities, and most importantly, how to create opportunities for young people and their families. So I'm on with Drew Keaton. Drew, welcome to the show.
Hey, it's good to be here, man, especially on a platform that's for us, by us, and one that's going to tell the truth. The reason why I say that, I gotta say, I gotta say this, I was quoted in a reminder, I picked it up today. I was quoted as saying something I'd never said.
Oh, really?
It's like, it, it, yeah, it was crazy. I never said it that way in the interview. So I, I, I want to give, let me do this. I know, you know how me and Dee, when we get together, man, I really appreciate you. I, I want to give you all the kudos for, you know, the forefront of, of the media aspects of creating these podcasts, this, this information with the newspaper and, and getting to the bottom of the stories and never misquoting the people that you were interviewing. So I want to give you kudos and shout out for that because that's a real art form to never twist and turn people's words and to keep it, keep it real, man. So appreciate you, man.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Appreciate that. So let's talk about you. Who is Drew Keaton L?
Drew Keaton L is, is just a regular person, man. Born and raised in the city of Springfield, Massachusetts. I love my city. I heard you in the opening, you talked about living in Springfield, don't live here anymore. That's like weird even hearing that, that D-Mars doesn't live in Springfield anymore. Because I know you was the face and the staple of the community at one point. But I'm product of the public school systems, went to technical high. I did earn a bachelor's degree at St. Thomas Quinnes College. But Springfield is me, man. I mean, I, I, I've seen, I've been in this area for a long time. I mean, I've seen the good of Springfield. I've seen a positive of Springfield. And it's, it's, it's just an opportunity as me running for this seat at large is to make a difference in the city of Springfield, the city I love. So you all know, I'm, I'm gonna do what I'm gonna do anyway for this city. But to be in these positions and these opportunities is, is more about the resources and really finding, finding where those resources are so I can help, you know, people achieve their goals myself and, and also to enhance the, the life of citizens in this city.
Okay. People talk about, you know, typically we'll vote for elected officials or candidates who have never been involved in community development in any capacity, whether it's infrastructure, whether it's community development, whether it's youth development, athletics, whatever the case may be. We have a number of candidates who will pop up. We have 21 candidates running for Springfield City Council at large right now. Many of whom who have never done anything for the city of Springfield, their communities, or their neighborhoods. Talk about some of the things that you've done because you've come with a long storied history of creating opportunities and making things happen in Springfield. Talk about that a little bit.
Well, that's a good question. And, and for me, so when I came back to Springfield, I was affiliated with Pa Musa Pan African American Museum downtown in Springfield. And I was one of the affiliate facilitators with the Rights of Passages Program, where we worked with ages from, groups from the ages of 12 to 16. And we were basically teaching them about their history. So on, on the beginning of me coming back into Springfield, integrating myself back because you know, when you leave in, for 10 years and you come back, you know, the times, the lands change, everything has changed. Even people that you went to school with have left and stuff. So it was really navigating around and who's who. So in, in between that time with the Rights of Passage, started meeting community leaders such as yourself and other people, you know, that cared about the community. Been involved with organization called The Crew for a minute now, that we do numerous, numerous things. We do what is asked of us to do. People ask, well, what does the crew do? What is asked of us? I mean, that encompasses everything. I mean, we help seniors. We help individuals that have, you know, fundraised, they're looking for fundraisers. They're looking to get their organizations start. So we're like a full body organization. We help people get their nonprofits off the ground and we support people in the community. On top of that, and you know, as myself, as the co-founder and D-Mars is the founder of the Indy Soul Festival, for 15, 15 plus years with the Springfield Indy Soul Festival is bringing a cultural sound arts and music festival to the city of Springfield, which is key and crucial. I mean, we have a lot of festivals, but to deal with a cultural aspect, there's no one that touches that in the city of Springfield. And you're gonna argue that, and I'm just saying, we've been doing this for a long time. On before that, with, you know, probably 10 years before that, or five years, 10 years before that of entertainment in the city of Springfield. Well, my body, you know, before that, when I did come back, you know, I was the reentry supervisor for the state of Massachusetts Department of Corrections. So I have a well knowledge of the reentry system. Right now, currently sit, I am the president, actually, of the CAB, the Advisory for Drug Court, the Community Advisory Board for Drug Court. They just named me the president of that. So which is, which is a tall task too. And, and, you know, it's, it's one of the things that I'm very, very proud of. And we have a lot of inequities and a lot of, you know, inequalities in the court systems. And I think they put the right person as the president in charge of that. So I could go on and on and on and on. That's just me in a nutshell. I know I forgot a few things, but that's just me in a nutshell.
Everyone, I know specifically the black community, everybody know, everyone knows who you are. You're a household name because of the, you know, the amount of volunteerism that you engage in. And I think that's really important. So you said you're from Springfield and you love your city. Tell me what it is that you love about Springfield. Why do you love Springfield? Part one. Part two, why do you feel it's important to give back? I mean, why do you sacrifice so much of your own personal time and your personal space to give back to the city of Springfield?
Well, I mean, it's, even with this, and I, I don't mean to keep bringing Darryl Moss up, but even meeting people like Darryl Moss and, you know, you know, James Lewis and all of these people in entertainment business and then, you know, you know, meeting people that are doing great work out there in the substance abuse, like, you know, the brothers over there at Adma, African Diaspora. It's just a, it's a, it's a community that grew up together, but it's also solid brothers that moved into the area that really care about Springfield. I mean, their, their work, their body of work speaks for itself. And, you know, my whole purpose really is for the youth. It's for them to experience things that I didn't experience and for them to get a jump and, you know, a, a head start. Because if I've known what I know now at the age of 12 or 13 years old, and you know, we do have that knowledge out there, just imagine where we would be. So it's really about the youth and, and spreading the knowledge to the youth and giving back. I mean, I, I truly, truly want everybody to succeed, especially our youth, especially the people also that look like us. I really, really want them to see because, you know, there's many opportunities in the city of Springfield. There's many resources in Springfield, but it's, it's funny thing about it is we're at the bottom end of it. And we shouldn't be at the bottom end of it, you know? So if I can make a difference in, in that aspect, that's why I'm running for, not only running for the city of council, but that's why I'm going to continue to do the work I do.
Okay. So you talked about being at the bottom, all this plethora of resources, plethora of resources throughout the city. Would you say that the biggest challenge for disenfranchised communities, specifically the black community, would you say the biggest challenge is access?
Absolutely. Absolutely. Access, the knowing, the wearing, the ability to apply for them. Definitely, that's the number one. That's the number one. I mean, as you know, there's a lot of resources in this city. And I, and I've said that already. I've, I've said that already. But the opportunity for us to be involved and to make a difference. You know, they talk about this word, you know, it's funny, they talk about this word stakeholders.
Okay.
What is a stakeholder? A stakeholder is what? Because you, because you make a certain amount of money? Or you are a decision maker? Everybody is a stakeholder. Everybody is a stakeholder. So therefore, you should, everybody should have the same opportunities as a person that considers themselves that make this amount of money or is an elite group, you know? And as you've known, in the city of Springfield, the stakeholders and the decision makers have been making bad decisions for people.
Okay. So just for the record, stakeholders are people who affect or can be affected by business, by business. Community stakeholders include neighborhoods, community development groups, environmental organizations, development organizations, citizen associations, and non-governmental organizations. So just by virtue of the fact that you live in Springfield, you love your city. You've put in God knows how many man hours into the city of Springfield. That also makes you a stakeholder. So when we say, you know, that becomes a concern, is it that, is the issue that black stakeholders are not considered valuable assets to the city of Springfield? Whereas folks, you know, non-black folks are strongly considered stakeholders and are considered when it comes down to resources and access. Is that what I'm hearing?
Well, it, it, kind of. I mean, you're also hearing that as a stakeholders, what is the benefit and what is the agenda of the stakeholder as well too? What is the benefit of the, what is the benefit and what is the agenda? Like you mentioned before, business community, you know, community groups, access. That's not a, that's not a level playing field. It's not a level playing field. Because if you have a move, a, a meeting that involves stakeholders, that encompass every single person in this city, am I correct?
That's correct.
That's correct. So, so there's a little uneven playing field. There's a lot, there's a lot of favoritism going on. And this is not to call anybody out. Just change the narrative of what you say a stakeholders is. Because any concerned citizen could be a stakeholder, especially if it's something valuable or something that they can make a difference in the community.
Absolutely. Okay. So as a city councillor, oh, I'm jumping again. Tell me what, with all that being said, why are you running for city council?
Well, besides, besides it's my birthright and I pay taxes, I'm running because, I mean, I think I can make, I think I can, well, I think I will make a difference. I'm, I'm making a difference. I grew up in the city of Springfield. I love the city of Springfield. And once again, I want to, the people that are disenfranchised, the equity issues that we have in the city of Springfield, I want to follow, I want to find, I want to be pointed out to where most of the resources are. And I want to divvy them out equally if I'm in that opportunity, you know, as one of the, one of the functions of a city councillor is to approve the financial budget of the city. So and to approve the financial budget of the city, obviously you know where certain funds go and what's going on. And I'm not one person to just vote on things just to vote this way or anything. I want to know where things are going, where money is being spent. And is downtown a priority? Why isn't down Mason Square a priority? I want to know things like this so we can actually, you know, spread the funds out equally and the opportunities out equally in the city of Springfield.
Okay. So that's a major concern for you, making sure that folks have access across the city unequivocally, correct?
Yes, yes. Major, major concern.
Okay. So
Without that, I, I just, can I add to that?
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
I really, I want to add to that because without equity and funding and equality and opportunities, you know, you can't fight gun violence. You know, you can't, you can't fight the homeless issues. You can't tackle certain things, you know, the issues with the senior citizens, transportation. You, there are organizations that if they were brought to the table in the city of Springfield, and that's one of the things as a city councillor, that I'm gonna make sure that these organizations are downtown in these meetings and people know who they are. That if you bring the grassroots organizations to the tables, all wounds, I'm not gonna say you're gonna heal everything, but you can get to some of these challenges and some of these problems that we face. So they need to be at the table and I think that's what's really missing in the city of Springfield.
Okay. I know during my 12 years of working under Mayor Sarno, I made a point of making sure that we had all types of cultural based activities right dead smack in City Hall with the Violence Prevention Task Force. We met right there in City Hall. Any type of challenges come up in any of the 17 neighborhoods, instead of us going there, I was made a point of trying to bring them to City Hall. You're looking at recreating that and doing the same thing and making sure that their voices are heard and make sure they understand that they own a piece of City Hall and that they are valuable there. Am I correct?
Yeah, that's, that's correct. I mean, before I even elected, I'm a constituent. So if I go in, I just elected official with a title that still owes the constituents answers. So of course, I mean, it, you know, I'm going in as, I'm not a politician. And I say that, it's funny though, I hear a lot of people saying that now. I'm not a, but I'm not a politician. I'm, I'm really not. I'm just a constituent that's concerned and wants to make a difference because I'm going in as a constituent and I'm gonna have a title as a constituent. So that's the big difference than going in as a politician or going in because you might get free healthcare or going in because, you know, certain things are why you're going, why you're doing it. Or going in because somebody coerced you to go in and do this and hey, we need more yes votes down here. That's not why I'm going in.
Okay. So right now, we presently have 13 city council seats, correct?
Correct.
We've had a number of professional politicians, professional candidates, or we had individuals who were going there strictly for the sake of enhancing their community identity, their popularity, whatever the case may be. The process has become more about personality than process itself. And the process, talking about holding the mayor and his administration accountable, overseeing the work that city departments are doing, over, providing oversight for the city budget, zoning and ordinance changes. And it's crazy because over the years, I've seen people do, do their job effectively, but you never see them out in the neighborhoods. Do you run on City Hall out into the neighborhood at times? I know we talked previously about bringing folks into City Hall. But have you given consideration as a, once you become a city councillor to take City Hall out into the neighborhoods? A lot of folks don't have time to go downtown. We know their parking is very expensive and limited downtown. So I don't recall when the last time was that they had, actually had a town hall meeting in the neighborhoods or, you know, city council meetings in the neighborhoods so that they can increase engagement and participation. Is that, is that, would that be a consideration for you?
Man, that's a great, a great question because you're absolutely right. People go on the campaign trail and they talk a lot of game. Like I even heard last night, you know, what we're gonna do town hall meetings. No, you're not. No, you're not. You're not doing that. You're not doing that. Me, I vowed to do that. I'll do that. I've seen you work in City Hall. I've seen Denise work. Jordan worked. I've seen tireless how you guys went into communities and did city halls. You did, once again, stakeholder. You did meetings. You tried to put coalitions together and stuff. I mean, I learned from the best. I learned from y'all. So I mean, as, you know, it's just a nine to five working downtown or if you want to call a, a eight to four, a eight to what, 12 when you in these meetings. But you should bring the issues to the people and you should have town hall meetings. I mean, I, I, you know, people have town hall meetings when the issues array and they're out of control. We should have town hall meetings on a regular basis. Now, I'm not, I'm not here to say that I'm guarantee you every week we're gonna be doing town hall meetings because that's realistically not gonna happen. But we're gonna get to the, the bottom of the issues. And I mean, if we're dealing with mental health, why don't we have these issues? Why don't we have these town hall meetings? Of case in point, in November, actually, we moved it back. Let's take it back. You know, I was trying to do a criminal justice conference to bring in people from all across the country. So we've moved that back to this April. And that already, whether I'm in City Hall or not, we are bringing a criminal justice conference to the city of Springfield. So as my body of work will speak for itself, I will be out amongst my, you know, constituents. I'm a social butterfly, so I can't be confined to any walls and any rules because that's just not how I operate.
Okay. I, I like that. Other question. You, you mentioned, you touched on gun violence. Let's talk about the wave of violence that it hit the city again. A lot of people are speaking on it as if it's, you know, something new. And it just surged violence that we have to deal with, whereas if you look at the data over the last 10 to 15 years, the numbers have been pretty consistent, somewhere between 18 and 22 murders per year. And that's only the murders. That's not taking into account the violent assaults, assault and battery with weapons, rapes, there's been a few child abductions. There are things happening on a regular basis. Can you speak a little bit on the root cause for that? And then as a city councillor, although it's out of the purview of city council, I think at times there's too much pressure regardless of who the mayor is, too much pressure put on the mayor of the city and not enough put on other elected officials who are also voted into office by the residents. Can you talk about the crime in the cities of Springfield? Root causes?
I would agree. I agree with your last statement. We put a lot of onus on the mayor and not enough on other elected officials. But I do want to say this, if the mayor is flouting a pocketbook and flouting a rainy day fund and how much money you have, then he should be accountable for it, especially when you're not bringing the right organizations to the table. That's one. Two, the, the city councillors, you can't, I can't blame all of them. Some of them are just not gonna do that work. That's not what they're in there for. They're, they're not gonna do that work. And so I want to, I want to say this. We have, and it goes back to equity, you have to put the right organizations in place. There's organizations right now that the city of Springfield partner with, they always partner with, and you see, you get the same results over and over and over. And I, and like you said, this, this is nothing new in the city of Springfield. To me, it's just a hot topic because it's campaign season right now and people are jumping on it now, topic, public safety. Ah, this is like, this is something new in the city of Springfield. We always had issues. And it's just, and we know where the issues are in the city because this is not happening in certain areas of the city. Last night I was asked, I'm gonna answer the question too. I'm just saying. Last night, I was asked about downtown. And I told them, I live downtown. Downtown is good. What about Mason Square and what about these other areas? And I'm serious about that. We need more, I mean, you got African Diaspora. I, I will give them props. We need, if there can be other organizations to come in and provide mental health. We need more programming. I know back in the day, you guys were running programs out of MLK centers, nonstop programs with Shannon Grant effort money, running them out of, and they still running programs. But it needs to be more resources put in to these after school programs and these programs that deal with, with our youth. And it always don't have to be targeted on, on gun violence. There are other issues that kids may face. It's not just gun violence. I mean, you, you do, and, and what I'm hearing too, I just want to say this, what I'm hearing too is, you know, every time there's an issue, there's always the rally of the troops. And then you want to militarize, militarize the city of Springfield, but you already know what areas they're gonna put all the military and all the troops in. So that right there is, 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 is falseness because you can't throw a Band-Aid on the issue and then you, and then you target a community because you think all the violence in there and you're thinking you're stopping violence. Okay? No, that's not what you do. You get, you get more troops on the ground and community policing. Most of these police, half of them should live in the Springfield, the city of Springfield. Residency is a big issue when it comes to violence. Okay? Because of the cops, if you live three, if I live three houses and I'm a police officer right from D-Mars and I know D-Mars have troubled youth in the house, do you think they're gonna be showing out if I live three miles, three houses down? Probably not. If you're shopping at Walmart and you see the police officers and you see people that you know put on the blue uniform or even the firefighters put on the uniform, are you gonna be, you know, you're gonna be, hey, engaging with the people? So I think that, that needs to happen when it comes to violence, the whole community. And then you definitely have to include the business community because the businesses, the community are gonna protect their assets. And they also need to, to, to be at the, at the table when it comes to what organizations or organizations that they can even put money into or that can help the situation. So I hope I answered your question with a long drawn. I hope I.
No, no, no. You answered the question and you give me what I've been looking for. I hear like a lot of councillors with candidates, period. Whether it's on the municipal level, the state level, the federal, but everyone talks about youth and what they want to do for youth. But it's very, I very rarely hear people talk about family and what can be done for families because these youth are coming from families. I know in my household, there's not much you can do with my, my son without me being a part of it or his mom being a part of it. So sometimes we speak on these young people as if they have no parents, if they don't have, as if they don't have grandparents or aunts and uncles or football, basketball, soccer coaches who play a critical role in their life, in the development of their lives. So as a city councillor, I mean, there's not, aside from finding funds, what else can be done to make sure that we're addressing families, whether they be black, white, Latino, Asian? When I was working in the mayor's office, I had an opportunity to work with Dr. Richard Tru from UMass and the five Asian communities. I don't know if people are aware, there are five distinct Asian communities in the city. And, and they were talking about the plethora of social challenges that they have in their community. And if we think that the black community is neglected, when you look at some of these communities and what they're going through in their complete lack of support because everyone overlooks them, what do we do to, I guess the question is, what do we do to make Springfield and the families that live here want to stay here? How do we attract new families? How do we make Springfield a better place? How do we get to the point where we're actually recognizing, you know, families? The diverse collection of families that we have in the city of Springfield?
Well, well, first of all, I, I want to say the, the profoundness in that question because nobody's ever asked this question, is, is very profound and it's right on point when you talk about families. So I mentioned before that I was Rights of Passage facilitator. And one of the things that we did before we admitted the kid into Rights of Passage is we had meetings with the families, three day retreats with the families to let them know what their child was getting in to. Not only what their child was getting into, but the expectations after their child finished the program and what their role was to step up as well. So in order for you to do that, the, the, the parents had to go through Rights of Passage as they self, so they can understand. Because a lot of times, we deem the, the, the youth or the kid as an issue and not understanding that the mother or the father could have issues too that's not being addressed. The elephant in the room is not being addressed. We don't need more organizations like DCF coming in and attacking the family because they're unfit, because they whooped the kid and they're unfit. And, you know, they're, they're unfit to, to deal with the situation. As, as, I'm, I'm distracted right now because my cousin is walking up to see my mom. No, so they're unfit. I mean, to come in there as the government to come in and, and rule and deem that, that everything they do is profound and stuff without them even dealing with, you know, issues. Matter of fact, I just had somebody who had the case, who I just have, I just had somebody who had a case with a family. She whipped a child because the child was on soliciting or entertaining older men on the phone and DCF came in and took the kids. And she's been without her kids for almost three months now. But they never once asked the mother, she need help. They just threw her in different programs, anger management programs and this and all that. So one of the things, I mean, real back to your question and stuff, because I hate to rumble and mix it up. I mean, I'll distract a little bit, is the family is absolutely the nucleus on what makes this thing go. If you, if you're not family oriented and you're not looking at enhancing the family and services for the family, but also keeping the families intact, then that's another issue in the city of Springfield where things can go awry.
Okay. And I'm not gonna keep you. So I had, let me see, I think I had, I think you answered all my questions. Oh. What strategies can, I mean, what can we do to ensure that the, that the city of Springfield? I know you talked about researching. Once you get in there, something that Tracy Whitford has done really well and she could definitely use support to, to make sure that the city continues to work in partnership with black With black business organizations. We know in Mason Square, from the time I moved there in ninety-four till now. We've probably lost close to fifty businesses over the years. When they did the Boston Road, um when they, when they redid the Boston Road corridor, Boston Road already down the state street, they eliminated all the parking. For small mom and pop businesses that once existed, but they made sure that parking continued to exist for Mass Mutual. Um and American International College, all the businesses lost their, lost their parking. What can we do as a city council to make sure that? That type, those types of activities um no longer continue to happen because we're still losing a number of black businesses. They're not getting. Support from procurement, they're not getting support from community development. Um Tim Sheen's department, community, um economic, the plan, the plan, Department of Planning and Economic Development. Where they have their annual vision board for the business community. It's like the black community is never invited to the table, black businesses are never even seen as a part of it. So what can we do as, you know, as a city council? How do you plan to push? The mayor's administration regardless of who becomes mayor this year? To ensure that they're continuing to work with black businesses. But I don't think we can address crime without addressing economic opportunity and economic empowerment. We all know that the crux of criminalized and deviant behavior is poverty. So if we're not creating those opportunities to make sure that we're tying in, tying in the black business community. Then we're not doing due diligence. In the North End, they made sure the Latino business community was a part of everything that happened in the North End. Granted, the black community is not just in Mason Square. The vast majority of black people do not live in Mason Square. Um we're all over the city. How do we fight to make sure that the black business block as? A spokesperson, once you become a city council for the black community and the city at large. How do we fight to make sure that the black business community is including, in, included in conversations and brought to the table as stakeholders?
Okay, alright, so this is a loaded question. So I'm going, I'm gonna, I'm gonna layer this. I'm gonna go up from the bottom and I'm gonna go up. Um to the top. So the first thing we need to do is to co- to create. A black business resource center for black businesses. One, and the reason why I'm saying that is because one of the challenges and issues that I have. With black businesses, if something happens to the owner or the person um that is running a business, there's no one over to take the business. So what we need to do is go into the business, we need to make sure that their frame is there, their infrastructure is there. And their capacity is there, that they have all their paperwork intact. That's one. That's one of the things. Specifically for our businesses, okay? Uh other businesses can come to help, but if they're not, if they don't look like us. Then first of all, then you don't do, you don't receive the services because we're trying to build our businesses up first. Let us get our business first, then we'll offer, maybe we'll. Hire somebody five years down the road and we'll deal with everybody else. But like you said, all the community is already doing it. Let's do that. Let's, let's um. Bring the infrastructure there. Let's make sure there's a five-way window out, a five-way window in. Let's make sure they have enough store and make sure the family's involved in the business. That's one. As far as, as the equity, we, we have to invest in a business. Like I said last night, the only city councillor I know that's even fighting and even talking about equity and equality when it comes to business is Tracy Whitfield. And I know you guys started the Associated Black Business Professionals for that particular reason. So we have these, these mechanisms in place that we really have to start supporting. I know, um you guys used to do a wonderful gala to raise money for the efforts to put it back into the community. So I hope that will come back um again, and I will look at working with the, the business, the black business, um. Associated Black Business Professionals too. Um but that might not be enough sometimes. So we have to, we have to. Um talk to the individuals that's in these organizations. We have to create more resources. Um not one that you have to go downtown or if you go here, right in their community or right where the businesses are. Also, as a city councillor, we need, I, I have to go talk to these businesses. What do you need? What are you in danger? What is your, what is your forecast? Do, you know, projections and stuff like that for them. Maybe do a business scope on them to see, um is this person in danger or loose? Cause you never know. I mean, a fire could happen. Um anything could happen in that business and, you know, I mean, I mean, God forbid, I'm just, you know, for, I'm God forbid, I'm not forecasting. Maybe a riot or something or something happens or is looted and they can't replace their funds. So anything can happen because we've seen across the country, there's things that happen. Um, um but one of the concerns, like I said, I, I, that I started from the bottom is, you know, people have businesses. And if, you know, they're sending their kids to school, nobody wants to do that business, they don't wanna keep the business and it's a staple in the community. So therefore the business closes and then we, we have no legacy. And we complain a lot of time that the black business is, I mean, a lot of it is, is, is the family structure. On who's gonna continue this business. Somebody might not wanna continue to have a store or, or Jamaican restaurant. Or a soul food restaurant, anything like that. But we gotta make sure that those businesses stay. And that's not all the businesses we have. I mean, we have, you know, um I see right, you lost it, you got um. Dr. Katrina right there. I mean, with her businesses, we have to support those businesses. And then the last thing also that I wanna add is we have to stop this not doing business with each other. We have to do business with each other. We have to support each other. You guys are doing a great job with the dining. It's, it's crazy because I don't dine at about five of y'all restaurants, but I wasn't worried about getting a card. I was just dining and eating some of my people's food and stuff. And I live right next door to Kai and Eli, so I make sure he bring me food all the time. But um, you know, we have to. The co-op between each other is very, very important. We have to support each other. We have to patronize each other. That's the biggest challenge too with black businesses because you can put all these mechanisms in place. And then we still have some, you know, no support or somebody go on Facebook and make a bad post on it. Next thing you know, everybody's not going to the restaurant. Yada, yada, yada. But the co-op with each other has to be stronger too. And then the last thing that I wanna add is, I know you've tried this too because when you do dine black, you do a black listing. But we need to have a black list, we need to have a black directory of businesses. So we know that what all service and it needs to be a scope of what their business does. So when you looking or you're looking for a mechanic or if you're looking for um a chiropractor or you're looking for an accountant. There's that, you know, circulate our dollars like the Jewish people do. That we need to just support them because I'm telling you right now. D-Mars, if we really put that directory together. We could circulate our dollars amongst each other and we won't have to, we don't need anybody else. If we really did that.
On that point, I just wanna, just for any of our viewers, um visit ABBP of MA dot O R G. There is a business listing of over three hundred black owned businesses. So the directory exists, it's on the association website. We haven't done a great job over the last two, three years to publicize that. But um we're gonna make sure that our, our board works on that. But there is an existing directory and you're absolutely right. That needs to be promoted. People need to know that it's their year round.
Yeah, and it's not just, and you know, it's funny, you guys have dine black, but let's have, um like, let's have mental health month. Where if, if you need mental health or you can referral mental health services, then the next month, let's have chiropractic month. So we, we, you can, you know, and then the next service, let's have, you, we, you already got the dine black. But then let's have, um you know, pediatrician, you know, you know, eyewear, you know, we have all these doctor, you know, all of this service, plumber week. Or plumber.
That would take all, all the existing organizations um with a black interest to have a, you know, to sit down and talk and discuss that. Because we have to focus on. If we start focusing on everything, then we're so broad that we wouldn't be effective. So we have.
No, 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 I'm not, no, I'm not, I'm not saying, I'm not saying you guys, what, yeah. Yeah, yeah. Cause that could be.
I'm adding on to it, that's all.
Yeah, because that can, that actually would assist you because you guys can be, you guys are already the resource center. So that the, the, I mean, you guys are already referrals. So the resource center will write, once again. In the areas where we need more business, the resource can go right up in there. So people can actually go in and get the referrals. And walk out with a card or something, or walk out with a sheet or something.
Okay. Alright, so we're almost at time. So let's see, you're running for city council at large. Tell people why they should vote for you and why you should be a strong consideration for them for the primary so you can make it to the November and. You know, hopefully beyond November as a city councillor. Tell people why they should vote for you. What separates you from the pack?
Um my track record speaks for itself. Um on September twelfth, I'm asking for your vote. Come out and vote Drew Keaton L. Um, um, I'm here. I'm, like I said, I'm a constituent. I'm a constituent going in with a title. And you are going in downtown with me. Um once again, I'm, is, I'll be transparent. You can call me on my cell phone, I, whatever business card they give me, whether you, you, everybody can call me on the same number. You know, you can email the same place and you know where to catch me. You can catch me at the Indy Soul Fest, you can catch me at the Nile if it's kicking. You can catch me at anywhere downtown, um twelve forty-two Main Street, the office downtown, you can catch me all over the city. Um especially at events supporting what you're doing anyway. Um but, you know, I'm a people's person, I'm not a yes. I'm not going down near the side with a certain part of the city or political geographic. Um that wants this to be this way or wants that to be way. I'm not swayed, I'm not easily persuaded. If I gotta vote for the, if I'm elected into office and I'm voting no on everything, I don't think should get a no vote, then that's what you gonna get. Um because it's not, I'm just one person. So, and I'm gonna get on the social media and I'm gonna tell everybody who voted this and who voted that. You're gonna get all of that out of me. Okay, um and I'm just gonna say, but I do need your help. I do need people to vote for Drew Keaton L. And once again, um you know, let's do something different. So if, when I am elected, I want you guys, I want at least six or seven people that come into the meetings with me. We're gonna have different people come into the meetings with me. Come in, let's, hey. Let's do this. This is Springfield. I am Springfield.
Okay. And then, then we are on with Drew Keaton L. He's running for city council at large here in the great city of Springfield, Massachusetts. And he's um really encouraging folks to come out and vote, be a part of the process. Don't forget, voting is just one step of the political process. The most important part of voting is holding your candidates accountable. It's the political advocacy, the political involvement. That's what's really important. A lot of times they say that our ancestors died so that we could vote. And I'd be the first one to tell you that. They didn't die so that we could vote. They died to ensure that we would have access to opportunity to make sure that things are fair equitably all the way across the board. It wasn't just for a vote. They died so that we can live. We are here and we have to make most of it. Not only should we vote, that's again. One part of the process, but we should be actively involved at all times. With that being stated, Drew Keaton L. Thank you so much for coming on with me, man. I enjoyed this. It's been informative. I've learned a lot.
Yeah, look, listen, man, I wanna, once again, I wanna thank you for giving us the platform and opportunity. Although D-Mars claimed the fame, is he sitting over there in probably ninety degree weather just chilling? Not even Springfield, he, the brother cared enough to still give plat- um. You know, city counselors and mayor candidates a platform in the city of Springfield, one of the cities that he loved and raised. So I'mma, I'mma name D-Mars, the new, the, the, the journeyman. Cause he don't been, he's the new journeyman and stuff like that. But no, it, it, it's a lot, man. People leave here. And they don't think about their city and they wouldn't even do this. Well, it's on the new ventures and on to new endeavors. But this brother's taking time out to, to bring platforms to everybody. So. Um I, I really appreciate and I really appreciate you giving me the opportunity. And I wanna say, I just wanna say this. I gotta say this because it's, it's been bothering me and I, I have a platform to say it. It's ve- really a travesty in the city of Springfield that we got twenty-one people running at large. Um I was one of the first ones to put my name in. Um not that, not that nobody can run, even if there were eighty people running, that's all said. And then we only have two ward races. When you have six ward races being unopposed is a shame on the city. And certain people were told to run, not run against certain people in the city, which is a shame in the city. That's why the city is the way it is. Because there's a lot of backdoor, a lot of deceivingness, a lot of connivingness, a lot of foolishness. That goes on for people's own interest and gain. Because every single, there should be, and I'mma make a vow of this too, even if I don't get involved in this no more. There should be no seat in the city of Springfield that's running opposed. Because they, I don't see no, no high authority, nobody has been that much that they don't have a seat running opposed. And I just wanted to say that, D-Mars.
Yeah, well, I'm glad you got that off the chest and I'm glad that we can offer a platform for you to do that. Alright, and there's what I had before we called it a rap?
Um nah, man, I just, once again, man, you know, you enjoy your day. I appreciate you, man. And, you know, it's, it's September twelfth, man. Vote Drew Keaton L, September twelfth, vote Drew Keaton L. Not Andrew Keaton, Drew Keaton L.
Alright, with that being said, thank you everybody for watching. We'll be airing this broadcast repeatedly. So that everyone can watch it as many times as they need to, to make a better informed decision. Alright, everybody, my name is D-Mars. That's Drew Keaton L, city council candidate. And um we're here for you. That being said, enjoy your day.